Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council Regular Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 27. This city council regular meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. Calling this meeting to order, and with that, Krista, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Councilmember Coco.
Here.
Councilmember Soltis.
Here.
Councilmember Hartshausen. Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Councilmember Porter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista, and if everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And with that, we'll move into approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Joe and seconded by Christina. I will call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous. The agenda has been approved as posted. We have no public communication tonight, so moving into our first of two public comment periods, speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Please notice that to all participants pursuant to state law RCW 42.178.555, campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate in City Hall and/or during any portion of the council meeting, including the audience comment portion of the meeting, is prohibited. Looking at our audience, if anybody in the audience would like to address council during this first of two public comment periods, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody raise their hand, this public comment period is closed, and we will have a second opportunity towards the end of our meeting. We'll move into consent agenda, which is items C1 through C4. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's moved by Beth and seconded by Christina to approve the consent agenda consisting of items C1 through C4. Call for a roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Christina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe, how do you vote?
Aye.
Beth, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous to approve the consent agenda. Moving into reports of commissions. First up is Arts Commission and Marita, welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Marita, and welcome.
Excellent. Thank you. This is Marita Benedict here, report on behalf of the Arts Commission from our June 10 meeting. So we actually, we finally were able to get the virtual art show up and have been running. We solicited submissions, which is really exciting, and we got several. And Carla is working, has been doing so much hard work for us, and we so appreciate her. And she is now working to help us get all of the submissions up online and the public voting ready so that people can actually vote for the winner. So it's been a really fun experience, and I think that our intention is to continue to do these, and I think it'll just get smoother each time, but we're really excited that this is finally in progress. The rotating art call update, it looks like the engineering contract was finalized. So I believe, I need to connect with Pat after this to just make sure that we are totally ready to go to go put that call out. Again, well, actually, I don't think I mentioned, I was actually out of town during our last meeting, so going off of the minutes, but I do know that there's been progress with the engineering contract, so that's an exciting step forward on that project. And then the utility box wrap update, I understand that we have a new chair for the Equity Commission, so I reached out to her just to follow up. I know I reported in past meetings that we had been working with the Equity Commission to solicit or ask for their input on the theme. We'd like their help in writing up a theme along the lines of what their commission stands for. So I've reached out to, I believe, Bronwyn is her name. And I just did that today. So Bronwyn's on here listening. She goes, I haven't heard from her. It was just a while ago. So, because we want to keep that partnership moving. And then in, let's see, they also talked about art camps and concerts. Jenny, our newest member, is a huge performing arts advocate, and she's extremely involved, which is amazing, such a good add to our team. And she's been instrumental in helping organize some of the live performances that have been happening out in Coming to Community Park this summer. So we've had a much fuller schedule, in case you haven't noticed. We have Pat's activities, and then we have the things that Jenny's been helping organize. So I think it's hopefully been a really fun summer for all of our residents out there in the park. And then sort of offline, Patty and I have been meeting separately just to move a few things forward. We're working on putting together an agenda for a retreat, which is really a working retreat. We haven't had one in a year or two, and it's an opportunity for us to just talk through all of our efforts and see what we want to refine, what we want to change, what's making sense, what's not. And kind of just put our, like, really get and do an in-depth planning session, if you will. So we're looking at having that probably take place in October. So she and I are starting to work on that agenda. And then also, we have been talking, Pat had presented the opportunity to us to work on a work plan. If you guys, you guys are probably familiar, but the example that we have is Parks and Rec work plan, so that it kind of gives us a little bit more of a formal outline to what we're wanting to accomplish and how we're going to get there. Then maybe the art project priority list, which we will also still have, but this kind of flushes that out a little bit. So Patty and I are working on that, and when we have a draft, we'll be presenting it to the rest of the commissioners. And then I've also still been meeting with Josh of CEDIS. He and I have been meeting pretty regularly, almost once a week, just firming up that partnership with Economic Development Committee or Commission and the Arts Commission. And we're not ready to present anything yet, soon, hopefully. But it's exciting to see that how the partnership is growing, and we're actually going to bring Patty into that conversation next week, so she's going to join us for our next meeting. And with that, we'll wrap up unless anybody has questions.
Anybody have any questions for Marita? Marita, thank you very much for a very thorough report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Next is Economic Development Council, Kalen. Good evening, Kalen, and welcome.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, we'll get a video going even. So thank you for this evening, and thanks for allowing me an opportunity to update you on where we are with CEDIS. I'm Kalen Provostky, and I'm a co-chair for CEDIS this year, along with Josh, as mentioned by Marita. So we continue to work on the foundation, the framework around our project X factor in relation to how do we create and drive some form of extraordinary livability within Covington? Looking at safety, looking at cleanliness, defined engaging city. And so we're trying to develop those pillars associated with that at which we're going to then develop subcommittees. As Marita mentioned, we're actually going to have several subcommittees that will be developed that will work hand in hand with our thoughts are the Arts Department, Parks Department, law enforcement, and I'm sure there will be many more that we will be reaching out to, to develop this. We do understand that this is a long-term plan. So our overall goal also is to develop short-term goals, so we feel as though we're making some headway in progress on this as well. So it's a very exciting project, and it's something that you will see coming towards the future. But as we sit right now, we are really on the foundational and framework piece, and I know Josh will be meeting with the Arts Commission again next week, and so we'll have more to come.
Thank you, Kalen. Does anybody have any questions for Kalen? Kalen, thank you very much for a thorough report. It's great to hear everything that's going on.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. Thank you.
You bet. You have a great evening, sir.
You too.
Next is Equity, Culture, and Social Justice. I do not see anybody here from that commission. We do not have a report from Human Services tonight. And Parks and Recreation, Tom Russell, welcome. Are you there, Tom? I do not hear you, Tom, but somebody started sharing a screen. You were on mute, Tom. There you go.
Am I here now?
Yep.
Okay.
Are you trying to share your screen?
I am trying to.
Okay.
Screen. Hmm. Okay, well, anyway, y'all can hear me, right?
Correct.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do this. So we had our meeting July 21. The Aquatic Center feasibility study was discussed, and it was, we got an update from Matthew on that. Ethan provided a brief report, and we canceled our regular commission meeting in August because we didn't really have anything on there to address. The Aquatic Center attendance is tracking normally lower than 2019, but higher than 2020, along with the activity attendance and private rental attendance are all tracking normally. The recreation swim attendance is up considerably. So those are all good thing. They've they've adapted to the COVID-19 regulations, including the regular swimming lessons, lap swims, and Water X programs. And big changes include instructors teaching in water for Learn to Swim Levels 1 and 2. So that's new. Summer concerts in the park on July 2 with 164 in attendance. At that time, the COVID-19 restrictions were lifted statewide, so people who were not fully vaccinated against 19 were encouraged to wear face coverings. Let's see. We had a story walk in partnership with King County Library System. It's been installed on the walking trail in Covington Community Park, and it'll be there through the end of August. Let's see. With the COVID-19 restrictions lifting, rentals are now fully operational at the Covington Community Park shelters and the community room at City Hall. There was a the amphitheater drainage project has been, was laid, and the sod was laid just before that record-breaking 100-degree temperature. But with good watering, the sod made it through, and it's looking healthy. There was some vandalism at the community park. And that's being addressed. We've also implemented a park bench dedication program where the city will offer a park bench dedication. It'll result in the installation of new park benches with dedication signage and city maintenance for initial 10-year term. So that's going, that's going to that should help with a lot of extra park benches that I think are kind of lacking at a lot of the parks. The Parks Recreation Open Space Planning public survey will soon be announced to all city residents, and it'll be through a mail postcard to every home that announces a cash incentive to go online and complete the survey. So I think that pretty much wraps it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Does council have any questions for Tom and the Parks Commission? Sean?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if, Tom, you can answer this. Maybe it's for Regan. We got an email today saying that the Aquatic Center is not open to to lessons, or what's the what's the situation on that?
I It is.
Yeah. Was that email incorrect, or what was the?
Well, the person who emailed their kids couldn't get in because the classes are full.
Full, okay.
And we are offering less, obviously, and we're offering them a little bit differently per state requirements, but no, it's open and functioning and operating, and we're gradually having more and more people in the pool.
Thank you.
Did I state that right, Ethan?
Yes, yeah, I mean, they're working through the challenges that, you know, we were closed at one point, you know, a year ago, and we've had to comply with various regulations, just like assorted businesses, and the Aquatic Center is no different, but they're running swimming lessons, you know, they're struggling with a little bit of a staff shortage, you know, they haven't been able to train lifeguards and swim instructors this past year, so they're playing some catch-up on that, so we're not meeting demand, that's for certain. But we are offering swimming lessons, so.
Any questions for the Parks Commission? All right, Tom, thank you very much for a thorough report. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a great evening. Next up is Planning Commission, Jonathan, welcome. There you are. Jonathan, welcome, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give you a quick summary of our last meeting. I'll be much briefer than our predecessors. During our last meeting, we approved amendments to the Form Based Code, the SEPA info exemption, and the multi-family tax exemptions, or sorry, exempted, excuse me, incentives. Can't seem to talk correctly tonight. Those should be coming to you for approval, I believe, on your August 10 meeting. Many of our planning commission members are coming to the end of our terms. I believe replacements or reappointments are due for you in August as well, and I believe that includes my own position. I look forward to talking with you again in the future, and have a great evening. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Anybody have any questions for Jonathan and the Planning Commission? Jonathan, thank you very much for a good report, and have a great evening, sir.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Next is Youth Council. I do not see anybody from the Youth Council, so we will move into New Business Item Number 1, which is to review the 2021 Summit Action Items. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a mid-year update of our Summit Action Items that the council came up with at your January 2021 summit, so I'll just go through the items and let you know where we're at so far through the year. The first one is to do the refresh of our vision, mission, and goals, and as you know, we've got that set. We were trying to do it for a little bit sooner this year, but scheduling didn't work out to get the entire council there, so we've pushed it back to October, and we have a date picked out and are excited to get that going. The next two items on the Summit Action Item List will, can't happen until after the vision, mission, and goals are updated, and then the other plans and whatnot will be integrated in with those. And then we've got an item for to research and refine the feasibility of the options for locating City Hall at either Town Center or at the new Lake Point Development. As you recall, at that point, Lake Point was working on purchasing that property next to ours from the Kent School District, and we'd had some conversations with them about the potential for a land swap, and they would develop Town Center area, and then City Hall could be located at the Lake Point Urban Village. Since then, we've had some changes where Lake Point has relinquished their rights in the property to Eagle Creek developers, and they're developing that now, so it really changes the dynamic from where we were at previously when we discussed this. So if council wanted to move forward on this, it would be, look different. We would essentially need to sell our property in Town Center and work with the developer at Lake Point if that's something we needed to do. It seems, though, like what I recall from council discussion is, let's pursue it, but our preference is to keep it in the Town Center, have our Civic Center there. And so I think if that's where council's at, we'll just continue to pursue that, unless council would like us to further look into how this, how this would transact now that Lake Point does not own a portion of the school district site. I don't know if council has any thoughts on that.
Also. I'm happy to bring it back up again at our next summit in January for further discussions.
Yeah, that works. Yeah, I think Krista, I see her typing that probably on the list for our summit right now, so thank you for that, Krista. That's a good idea, Mayor. So the next one is a resolution for council to consider adopting and assigning recommendations for Human Services to help spend House Bill 1590 funds, and that's been done and submitted to council. And then to bring forth, the next two are the ballot propositions, and we discussed that in our special meeting a little earlier and got some directions from council there. And then to bring a proposal to increase the admissions tax rate in Covington, that will be done a little later this fall, or at least before the end of the year, and we'll bring that back to council proposition there. And the next one is adding an administrative position into the Police Department. As you recall, that's something we spoke about, and Chief McCurdy felt like what might be of most help at this point is an administrative position rather than another patrol officer. And so a decision card has been submitted for that. And so that will be something the council will get to deliberate on during the budget process. The next one, I wanted to get a little direction from council on lobbying the state for funding to address deferred maintenance of the city's existing infrastructure. As you know, that's a regional statewide issue, and it's something that we kind of have, we haven't had as our priorities during the legislative session, but we have had it as one of our policies to work on, but I think the best option for this is to, this is something that, you know, we talked about right as the legislative session was starting, and we worked with AWC to do this, but it wasn't one of our 2021 legislative priorities. So it wasn't where the bulk of our effort went with staff or our lobbyists. So I think the best thing to do on this one is to obviously continue to work with AWC, which we will do. But this, later this fall and winters, we're putting together our 2022 legislative priorities. Council can consider whether this should be one of them or not at that point, if that works for council. Seeing some head nods there, so I think we're good there. Next is involve the council in advancing the Public Education Plan. And Carla has been, put that plan into action, has informed the council of several things, and continues to work on that. Part of that is the meetups with the mayor, which is another item on here that has been happening. And then the next is present a policy regarding the council's use of social media platforms, including Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. So those policies are being drafted, and we'll bring those back to council for further discussion soon. So those are the updates. Is there any questions that council has on any of these items?
Does council have any questions for Regan? Regan, think, oh, Beth.
Yeah, so do we have a schedule of anything on the books for outreach? I know we've got a few of the chat with the mayor. Is there anything else that's, is there like a schedule? With anything else that's already on there?
I'll talk to Carla. In a typical year, there would be. We have different events, and we would always, we'd have the council out at those things. So I'll have to ask Carla for sure if there's an actual schedule or just kind of an understanding. We've got these, like, National Night Out was one of them, right, which is coming up next week. So I don't know about a specific schedule, but I think kind of the intent of it is that when there's something that the city is involved in or sponsoring, that the council get involved in promoting that and attending that. And then if there's items that the council or individual council members would like to do, then work with Carla and I, and we can try to help out, you know, providing whatever we need. Like, I know, Beth, you've visited some HOAs and things like that.
Well, I was also wondering about the, two years ago, we did the Love the Cove service event. One was at CCP, and the other one was on the road. I think this might, you know, assuming nothing goes sideways COVID-related. If there's an opportunity to get those, something like that, and that's my opinion, but it's a great way for outreach and to connect with folks.
Yeah, no, it's a great idea.
Anyway, thanks.
Anybody else? And just so council knows, the next mayor's meetup is scheduled for Monday, September 20.
Okay, thank you, council. Yep, we'll keep working on these.
Thanks, Regan. Appreciate it. Next is New Business Item Number 2, review the 2021 Urban Growth Capacity Report and King County Jurisdiction Growth Targets. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Covington City Council, Ryan Herrman, Planning Manager for the City of Covington. Earlier this year, you received a presentation from King County regarding the Buildable Lands or Urban Growth Capacity Report that's done every five years for King County under the Growth Management Act. King County provided kind of an overview of the methodology and how things changed from what we know as Vision 2040 to what's coming up as Vision 2050. So at the June 8 meeting, we received a request from councils to provide an informational presentation on the 2021 Urban Growth Capacity Report as amended requirements for the Growth Management Act. So current growth targets were last incorporated in the 2012 countywide planning policies. So when we adopt a comprehensive plan, we have to make sure that it's consistent with the countywide planning policy, so those are part of the countywide planning policies when we we go to build our comprehensive plan and our planning for the future. So they were not markedly changed after originally being set in 2007 because of the whole Great Recession that we went through, and that the State Office of Financial Management at the time didn't have the data, so they're typically and that the State Office of Financial Management at the time didn't have the data. So they're typically done every five years, 2007, 2012, 2017. And of course, coming up here quickly. So the growth targets were set for the year 2031 and subsequently extended to 2035, just to match the horizon for comprehensive plan updates pursuant to the Growth Management Act. Before you'll remember that Covington was listed as a small city under the regional growth strategy, Vision 2040. Covington and the group of small cities were required to split a variety of allocations, housing and jobs at that time. And we ended up with quite a few. The most current capacity in the in the 2021 urban growth capacity report is based on methods developed by King County and cities working with King County in response to recent updates to the Growth Management Act, buildable lands program requirements in the last couple of years. So the urban growth capacity report identifies total capacity for future housing and jobs within the city of Covington. I'm going to share my screen if I possibly can here. So this is the map that was in your packet. If you notice, the map was kind of cut off on the sides, the top, the legend was a little a little compromised. So it was a little difficult to read exactly what was going on. But this is the the 2021 study that was based on City of Covington land capacity. So this was done in 2019, 2020 and adopted, it will be adopted this year by the King County Council. So as you see, the city boundaries are listed there. The areas that are kind of in a hash mark are what's called a development pipeline. So please note that those development pipeline projects are taken at a snapshot in time. As you may or may not know, we have a lot more potential development pipeline projects that are coming down and with recent applications and movement. So the blue is critical areas or buffers. The yellow is vacant residential. The green is residential that is considered redevelopable. The red is non-residential or vacant or mixed use. And the the kind of purplish color is non-residential, redevelopable. So when you look at these numbers, kind of think about what the city is going to look like in 2044. When when you come and look at these numbers. So the numbers may seem daunting at first, but when you when you realize just exactly what's going on with the methodology, it'll start making a lot of sense. So the capacity report identified for the years 2019 through 2044, total housing capacity of 4,310 units. So that's not just single-family housing, that's apartments, condos, townhomes, duplexes, all that stuff. Also in the report for 2019 through 2044 was the total job capacity for the city of Covington, 8,421. So for the urban growth capacity report, the actual allegation allocations or targets for the city of Covington, housing is 4,310 and jobs are 4,496. So under the Growth Management Act, King County in coordination with the city adopts growth targets for ensuring a 20-year planning period. Growth targets are policy statements about the amount of housing and employment growth each individual jurisdiction is planning to accommodate within its comprehensive plan. So growth targets are adopted for each jurisdiction and unincorporated urban King County areas in the countywide planning policies. So looking at kind of the pipeline projects, it's important to realize that developments like Lake Point itself consists of 38% of the potential dwelling units and approximately 35% of the potential jobs. So if you pull the jobs and the 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 housing units that are allocated as part of the development agreement and the the planned action ordinance, you'll see that the numbers when it comes to 2044 aren't too difficult to reach. And with the way the city is developing, the rate it's developing, we're likely going to hit that. So with that, I provided you a a Covington specific capture of the of the growth targets and their analysis, and it provides all the information. If you have any questions, like I said before, this is an informational item and people are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ryan. Does anybody on council have any questions for Ryan? Beth.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Ryan, that map that you showed, there was the critical areas that were hash marked. I'm sorry, the critical areas were with blue. And then the areas in the development pipeline were hash marked. So is it just that like that Lake Point section and where would the buffer? That was all in our environmental impact statement assessment, right? The supplemental.
So the all that information for for the Lake Point Urban Village and the buffers and and the delineation, all that stuff were agreed upon in the development agreement. So those are already set in place. What you're seeing there is is basically is 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 King County data when it comes to critical areas and what they have. There may be there, there may not be there. In these circumstances, they certainly are there. But as to the extent of them, there may be buffers added on to those. So that includes critical areas and buffers. So there could be more space or less space.
So though it says pipeline, it's not necessarily every square inch of that to be.
No, 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 it's it's the project, it's the project allocations. As you'll, you notice that the stationed by vintage on the corner of Covington Way Southeast and Southeast Wax Road, that is 189 units and that's in the pipeline. So there's 189 units added right there. And if the property behind the the city property within the town center develops, there's an additional 250 potential units there. So units will add up fairly quickly. And by us doing that, we're going to get our growth targets. I'm sure quite easily. Especially with Lake Point moving forward.
So how many units would you anticipate going into the town center? You said 250. We've got 189 with stationed by vintage.
Well, I will give you the the that I give everybody. It really depends.
Depends, sure. Sure.
We we have our, we have our targets. We have what we think could potentially go in there and I'd have to pull those numbers up for you, council member, and I could provide those in an email.
Okay.
To you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Does anybody else have any questions for Ryan? All right, Ryan, thank you very much for a good presentation. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next is new business item number three, consider an ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters for a period of six months in response to House Bill 1220, adding new sections to Chapter 18.20 of the Covington Municipal Code, amending the Covington Municipal Code 14.30.040, Covington Municipal Code 18.20.1305, Covington Municipal Code 18.25.030 and Covington Municipal Code 18.31.080. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Ryan Herrman, Planning Manager. So this this ordinance is an interim zoning regulation related to what the mayor just referenced in response to House Bill 1220. So on July 25th, certain portions of House Bill 1220 went into effect that does not allow cities to prohibit it prohibit transitional zoning or other permanent supportive housing in any zoning, any zones where residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed. Starting on September 30th, 2021, the the requirements change a little bit and the cities may not prohibit indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in any zones where hotels are allowed. Except for cities that have adopted ordinance authorized in indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in a majority of zones within one mile proximity to transit. So we took a look at at a map based on our bus stops here within the city and the the one mile radius on that pretty much takes in most of the city. So it's, it'd be difficult for us to provide too much difference on that. But when when we look at this in the future, I think that we'll be able to take a little bit more and do some analysis on that. So reasonable occupancy spacing intensity of the use requirements may be imposed by ordinance on permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, indoor emergency housing and indoor emergency shelters for public health and safety purpose, but such requirements on occupancy space and intensity for the use may not prohibit the sighting of sufficient number of permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, indoor emergency housing or shelters necessary to accommodate the need for housing and shelters as provided by the Department of Commerce under the Comprehensive Plan Housing Elements Requirements. So because we're under some time constraints with with the passing of that legislation and when it certain aspects came into effect, we thought it would be prudent to get an interim development regulation ordinance in front of the council. So that we could, we could have some interim regulations or interim codes. And same time, we would have a a six-month period where we could draft some code and have the planning commission, city council review it in response to House Bill 1220. So the interim regulations, they they do, they look like there's a lot, but there's not really. We amended certain sections in Chapter 18.20 CMC to add the definitions that are consistent with House Bill 1220. We amended CMC 1820 1305. That's a definition of transitional housing facilities. We also amended CMC 1825.030 residential land use. If you look at Exhibit 1, you'll see those those terms that are mentioned earlier in this report added to that table. You'll also see CMC 1831.080 permitted uses, excuse me, permitted land uses. Those are in Exhibit 2. So you'll see those attached and added to the table. And then we had to alter the permitted use table or excuse me, the decision types table in CMC 1430.040 by adding the uses as specified decision types. So consistent with state law, the interim regulations are adopted, a public hearing must take place within 60 days. Staff proposes to include a review of the interim regulations in the the 2022 Planning Commission Work Plan. In in the 2024 update of the City Comprehensive Plan, staff will plan to include amendment amended goals in House Bill 1220 within the housing element. And so this is, we may impose interim regulations for effect up to one year and for six-month intervals thereafter. So the big, the big kicker here is just how we came up with the numbers. So if if you look at the the ordinance, there's a, there's an explanation of of how we came up with those numbers. So basically you take the the identified people that were in the 2019 point in time study. Now, so the individuals that are unsheltered at that time in 2019 with a 5% increase in 2020. You take those numbers and you look at southeast King County and in that we have a certain allocation. So we took that number and we added all the number, all the population for the four cities in southeast King County and did our proportional share of our population compared to that. And then we multiplied that out and came up with how many people were we should be planning for for individuals that are experiencing homeless elsewhere or being unsheltered. So it's not a, it's not a perfect methodology, but it's a methodology that we can use in the interim basis until the Department of Commerce provides the the actual numbers, which will take place sometime in 2022. So with that, open for questions.
Does council have any questions for Ryan? Sean.
So thanks, Ryan. I'm still kind of struggling to try and what does this allow us to do with this interim regulation? I mean, I I I understand if we don't do something. Basically, emergency shelter could go pretty much anywhere in the city, but what is the interim regulation going to allow us to do? And then what can we do after that?
So basically what happens is we're we're getting ahead of the process. So getting ahead of the September 30th event, we're basically putting out development regulations on an interim basis so that we can, we can put some some capacity or some control mechanisms on there based on what is consistent with the code and what is reasonable. And so what we did is we drafted all that information up and provided a permitting aspect. So for instance, if you look at the table, some the the permanent supportive housing and the transitional housing would be a type one permit where a shelter, emergency shelter, emergency housing would be a type two permit. So that would be an administrative determination by the Community Development Director. That could be changed. I could tell you that there are several jurisdictions that are working on this. In fact, let me see if I can open up some examples here and give you some information. So this is a wide variety of different cities that we were able to pull data from, just taking a look at different aspects. So C-TAC, they are working around service needs and performance standard options. They they're providing emergency shelters and housing permitted and tied to religious institutions and agents and agencies. They are also requiring permanent supportive housing and transitional housing as conditional use permits. Federal Way is a type three process, which is a director's decision under their code. They are all permitted uses with citing standards. So if you look at what we provided, you have citing standards in there. And you have certain capacity standards that are provided in the code. And that could be changed. We we came up with those numbers based on 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 discussions with the Department of Commerce and and taking a look at the methodology that we came up with. So Maple Valley is, they they're passed an interim zoning regulations. All uses that they came up with for what we talked about tonight are listed as commercial or excuse me, conditional use permits. They also eliminated hotels in in some zones as permitted use. That reminds me, there's another jurisdiction in Pierce County. Their their way of doing this was to eliminate all hotels as a permitted use in all zones. So
Okay.
That's one.
So that that's interesting because I was thinking that basically what we can do is put conditions on where on how these are permitted. But until you said that, I didn't think we could prohibit them anywhere. But if there's no hotels in a section that effectively prohibits that the sighting of those emergency shelters?
That's something I would have to defer to legal counsel on.
Right.
Mayor Pro Tem, if Mark wants to chime in on that, I think he's more capable.
Yeah, that'd be good to know. And basically just because it sounds like we can put conditions on them. And and I don't know the exact reasonable ones, but I'm I'm getting the impression we cannot prohibit them. So. Okay.
So if I can jump in here and just speak to that real quick, what the what the specific RCW says, the code city shall not prohibit indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in any zones in which hotels are allowed. And with an exception for what that within a certain distance from transit, as Ryan was discussing earlier. So technically, that is a way that if you want to remove hotels from zones, period, then that is a potential option. I'm not sure if that would fit into the city's long-term goals for the allowed uses, but that is an approach that some cities have taken and I'm that's not one that staff is recommending at this point to control the provision of the intensity space and occupancy, but.
Do we have hotels in our, as a permitted use in our residential? Areas?
No, we have hotels in the the downtown
Yeah.
zones and in in some of the Lake Point zones.
Okay, so it sounds like we wouldn't even have to worry about the it's not an issue in those residential communities that are not zoned for. Okay.
Correct. This basically would impact two zones within the downtown and two zones within Lake Point. Potentially.
And and that's just for emergency shelters.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other ones could be in others.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think that was that, I guess, parlayed into the the question that I had because we we have the temporary housing such as accessory dwelling units, you know, if somebody wants to VRBO their home, that type of a scenario would fall into would likely be in a residential area and that would impact the other two categories. Correct.
You're talking you're talking about the transitional housing, the permanent supportive housing?
Yeah, I believe that. Yeah, I believe those are the two that would. And we're not really addressing that at the moment. We're mostly talking about emergency shelters because it's the hotels that were. Okay.
Well, well, actually, we are council member. If if you look at if you look at page forty nine of your packet, you'll see subsection eleven. So subsection eleven refers to permanent supportive housing and transitional housing are allowed subject to the following criteria. So there is a list of criteria that we provided as part of the interim basis for for those permanent supportive housing units and transitional housing. So kind of a morbid feedback on those type of housing units. Those are those are agency run or nonprofit run. So they have certain regulations and rules provided by the state that they have to be clients with. So the items that we provided on page forty nine through page fifty one of your council packet, those are just the conditions for permanent supportive housing. Now, if you look at subsection twelve of that, that goes into emergency housing shelters and emergency housing facilities. So there's quite a list of conditions that we added to the the code section for your consideration this evening. When we bring this back later, after going through additional review and going through the planning commission and public process, there may be some changes to that based on on whatever the planning commission recommends and the council ultimately decides.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Does anybody else have any questions on this for Ryan? Seeing nobody raise their hand, we do have a proposed ordinance before us. If council wishes to take action and it reads the proposed ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters for a period of six months in response to House Bill one two two zero, this council wish to take action tonight.
So moved.
Okay.
I heard Beth is the first who seconded.
Yeah, that was me.
Oh, Sean. Okay, so it's been moved by Beth and seconded by Sean to approve the proposed ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters for a period of six months in response to House Bill twelve twenty. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
I I just think that, you know, until we get the the specific data by the Department of Commerce, it's helpful for residents and our staff to have something in place so that we can monitor that until we get the information we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Sean, would you like to speak to your second?
No, I'm I'm good. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters for a period of six months in response to House Bill twelve twenty. Call for roll call vote. Jared, how do you vote?
Hi.
Sean, how do you vote?
Hi.
Christina, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jennifer, how do you vote?
Hi.
Joe, how do you vote?
Hi.
Beth, how do you vote?
I.
I vote I as unanimous to approve the proposed ordinance. Thank you all very much. Ryan, thank you for a good presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
And in depth presentation. Next up is future agenda items. And our next meeting is in August. On August tenth, does council have anything they'd like to see at a future agenda item as in a future agenda item? Christina?
Yes, I'm in lieu of how our reports go from commissions and how much happens at meetings, I would like to suggest that we at least have a discussion about potentially allowing council members to at least, I'll just say to sit in as an audience on commission during commission meetings, not speaking, I think, obviously, this is just for discussion, but I would like if we, you know, if it is supported, that we have a mild discussion about that.
I think there is a legal reason why we cannot attend commission meetings.
Right, so so not not attend. I know everything's different in the Zoom world right now, but at least listen in on if that makes sense where we would not speak, but.
Add a little clarification. I don't think there's anything legally preventing the council, a council member from attending other than your own rules.
Okay, thanks, Regan Mark.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just to speak to this, it's rule eight point five in the council rules and it's basically the way the council set this up previously is to avoid any undue influence on the city's advisory bodies and prevent unauthorized or misrepresented communications between the council and advisory bodies. That's what the prohibition is there for. And what I would suggest, council member solstice is that if you would like to revisit this, we could add this to the list of things to look at during the council summit with the other list of all the other council rules as they come up. But that's totally up to you. If you would like to do it sooner and have a discussion about it, that's also an option as well.
Thank you, Mark.
Christina, are you looking?
I if there's
Summit?
The summit is quite a few months out, is it not?
In Ja- end of January.
Yeah. I mean, if there's support, I would like to revisit it sooner. But if not, then the summit will do.
Is there support from other council members to visit this sooner or wait until the summit?
I would, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Beth.
No, I was just going to say, I think it brings up a really good point about how much collaboration there is with commission and council and I think it's worth a discussion, you know, of ways that we may be able to help support them differently. I think it's certainly worth talking about.
So are you wanting it before the summit or wait until the summit?
I think I think I'd prefer having it before the summit.
Okay, is there anybody else wishing to have it before the summit? Okay, so we have three people that are wishing to have it before the summit. So Regan, if we can put that on a future agenda item.
Yeah, we will. Just to make sure we bring forward what those three that just asked for it to be brought forward, or maybe you can talk with me online about specifics of what staff should come prepared with or just maybe we bring the rule and the council rules it stands now and let council discuss that.
So the three that suggested were Christina and then Beth and Joe both agreed with that. So that's the three.
But if in response, I think in response to specificities, if if the rule could be brought forward, so then we can discuss how best to and if we want to change anything.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else having a future agenda item? All right. Thank you all very much. We'll move into council staff comments. And we'll have to turn it over to Andy.
Sorry, I was slow to get myself unmuted there. So it's my last council meeting, so I'm going to do the honorable thing and pass it off to Megan Roberts. So I don't have anything else to add tonight, though. Thank you all for the support over these last six years and look forward to some of you all again in the future.
Good luck in Sumner, Andy.
Thank you.
Megan. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Very faintly.
Sorry, I'm trying to figure this out.
There you go.
There I am. All right, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks, Chief McCurdy. I I don't have a lot to add other than I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to be working with you guys a little bit more. And I really appreciate everything that Chief McCurdy has done over the years. He's been wonderful to work with and will definitely miss by the city.
Thanks, Megan. Appreciate you being here tonight, Megan.
Thank you for having me.
Next is Ethan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick comment. I want to share that the city has been awarded a hundred thousand dollars in grant funds from the King County Youth and Amateur Sports Grants Program. And that's for re-turfing the Covington Community Park Athletic Field, which will address some there's certain types of grasses that have kind of infiltrated into the field and that's created a host of issues, including drainage issues and whatnot. So this will allow us to fix the the field, put put down new turf, which mean fewer field closures and more access to the field by the community. So it was a very competitive program, but that project was a standout for funding. It was just one out of forty that got funded out of over a hundred and twenty proposals. So that's great news for the city. That's it.
Thanks, Ethan. Don?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. One, Andy will be missed. I appreciate everything as usual. And also, I wanted to let you know that our SR eighteen two fifty six interchange project, basically, the the next phase of our Covington connector, as we've kind of doing both ends before we do the middle. That project went out to bid and we had bid opening. And so we actually, the lowest bid came in at nine million dollars and the engineer's estimate was over twelve. So that's really good bids in that regard. So that will be coming to you guys for approval at the next council meeting. So the tenth. That's all I have.
Thanks, Don. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So as Jonathan Ingram mentioned earlier, the planning commission made a recommendation to the city council to approve the the form based code, the amendments to the CIPA infill exemptions and to the multifamily tax exemption. There are some other code amendments that go along with that package. That package will be provided to you at your next council meeting. So the August tenth meeting will be quite a lot of information. So hopefully, everybody's prepared to do some reading and hopefully get that approved because we have to have it done for the Department of Commerce grant. Other than that, thank you, Andy, for everything you do and you will be missed.
Thanks, Ryan. Casey?
I just wanted to mention that we just received our audit letter from State Auditor's Office certifying our financial audit for last year. We had a clean audit, no exit items, no findings, nothing. So that was fantastic news. It's only taken three months this time for some reason. But they're still working on accountability and we'll should be wrapping that up soon. And other than that, thank you for everything, Andy, and we'll miss you. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Regan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just by way of reminder, I know you know this, we mentioned it a little bit earlier about National Night Out this coming Tuesday. Megan has been working to make sure that we're all set up to have our officers at all seven neighborhoods that are participating. We'll also have some of our public work staff and equipment visiting those. And I know we've got some council members signed up to visit as well. So thank you for representing in that way. I also wanted to bring this up as it's, I think it's a pretty cool thing. There's the moving Vietnam wall. If you've heard about about that, it goes on tour through different places. And it is in Enham Claw from August fifth to August eighth, open twenty four hours a day. You can look that up easily on Enham Claw's website, but I think a really cool memorial there. And then just for Andy, you know, Andy came on shortly after I did. He is just an exceptional chief example leader and friend. He'll be very much missed and I just want to thank you, Andy, for your service. You are you've done exceptional here in Covington and thank you. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Regan. Mark?
Like to echo what Regan said. Best of luck to you, Andy, moving forward and in your new role and down in Sumner. And I nothing else this evening and there is no executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Krista?
I would also like to pass on my congratulations to Andy. We will miss you. It's hard to think that it's your last week. I also just wanted to touch on the National Night Out. So thank you, Regan, for bringing that up. And please sign up or let me know if you would like me to add your name to the list. Also, I want to touch on Mayor's Day of Concern, which is typically end of September. I'd like to get council consensus on holding that event on Saturday, September eighteenth. If we could get that as a placeholder.
So I re- did Lee Soul say that date? Because I reached out to her to ask what date and she didn't give me an answer this more or yet last week.
So we have not contacted Storehouse yet. I wanted to provide them a kind of a first option and a second option. Julie Johnson said that typically we actually ask council first, but this is my first time kind of helping with that coordination.
Oh, sorry, Krista.
Go ahead.
I'm good either the eighteenth or twenty fifth, whatever works best for the rest of the council.
Is everyone okay with the eighteenth?
I'm unavailable the eighteenth, but that may not be a make or break for yeah, whatever.
Okay, both dates.
So September twenty fifth as our first option then?
Yeah, let's do, let's do the twenty fifth.
I'm out. I'm out both weekends. That's totally fine. I'm a busy, busy bee. Got to suck up all this fun before COVID. Down again.
Okay, thank you. And then another kind of outreach opportunity for council is that I am continuing to check in with HOAs each month about their annual HOA meetings. We just haven't had a whole lot of HOAs that have been having annual meetings this year yet. So hopefully, looking into the fall, we'll have a few of those. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thanks, Krista. Jared?
So on my, I'm calling it my road to recovery. First, it was my back, then then I tore my rotator cuff. I'm trying a sleep or not sleep, although I do have sleep deprivation, a sensory deprivation tank. And I can never pronounce it right, but cry- cryotherapy. So I'm super excited to try that. Just oh, I'm pretty desperate at this point. I'll try anything just to feel better. But sounds like I'll do all my speeding in Sumner now. So thank you, Andy. Just congratulations on the new role and and we'll miss you here in Covington. Other than that, glad we canceled the August meeting because I'm going to be gone like all of August for the Army. So it's perfect timing. So that's it.
Thanks, Jared. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll just echo what everyone else has said about working with Andy. We'll 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 miss you and appreciate your service and and best of luck in Sumner. A couple of things, Chris, I'll I'll get back to you about National Night Out. There's a couple of communities have already reached out to me about attending, so I'll I'll get those to you. And then this last weekend, Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority had a a big open house at their headquarters in in Kent. Was well attended. I want to say several hundred people turned out. They they had displays of search and rescue they do, vehicle extraction, fire suppression, but they also had a number of their toys there as well, helicopters, swift water rescue boats, all of their engines, plus their new hook and ladder that they just purchased, which is a really nice nice addition to our our RFA. They're having a couple more open houses. They're having a couple more open houses, I think there'll be smaller ones this weekend, 31st, and Station 71, and Station 77, and there's information on their Facebook page about that, but it really is interesting to see actually what they do, and, and some of the equipment they use, so anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Christina.
Yes, I, we, our family had the privilege of attending the Summer Concert Series this last Friday at, at CCP, and the band was amazing. The Journey Tribune, anyway, it was really good, I'm not very easily impressed by singers, and they even let kids come up to the stage and sing, it was really a great aura and a beautiful family event, I ran into Margaret, heart of, as well, and got to say hi, and she was happy to see council there. But besides that, I'm just living, I feel like we're all like doubling up on summer this year, we all missed it last year, so we're playing summer hard this year, and having a good time, and thank you, Chief, for everything you carry, your presence around you that just puts a smile on everybody's face.
Thanks, Christina. Jennifer.
I just wanted to thank Casey for putting that information together about sales tax, that's really helpful. And I wanted to make a comment about the pool, my kids have been using the pool, their Luke finishes lessons, Porsches and lessons now, they are smaller, the, the pool has been doing a great job of flexing with the ever-changing rules, and I really appreciate the clear communication that we've experienced, and kudos to everyone that's working there and keeping the ship on course. And I think that's it, oh, and we'll miss you, Chief, every time I check my mail, I will think of you, how I should be checking it sooner, and I appreciate those reminders. And I will try to do better in your honor, so best of luck.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joe.
I'm gonna start with Andy, Chief, I, I thank you for all the outreach you did in our community, I, I thank you for the ability to keep our officers here, I, I think you, you were a major factor in the ability for us to maintain what we have, and to help grow our department. You have some very big shoes to fill, and I'm sure they will be filled well, but I am very sad to see you go. As someone who used to work in Sumner, you want to plant yourself at the McLendons down there, there are people who like to just run in there and walk out without paying, they're, they're very good at that, so I'd say just plant yourself there, and you'll have a busy day. I wish you nothing but the best of luck, we will miss you, and like Jared, I'll do my speeding in Sumner, just so we can catch up and get a coffee that way. On to some other business, I had Krista send out last, our last SCA pick meeting agenda to everyone, item number six, so you don't have to give me an answer today, but next meeting, I might need one, because we, PIC is not meeting again until September, but item number six is the Metro Policy Updates and SCA Guiding Principles. This has been something that Metro, which I serve on the Regional Transit Commission, and I, if I had known this was going to PIC, I would have mentioned it beforehand, but I missed the June meeting for RTC. So we're just asking for some feedback from our council, so if everyone can read it, give me some feedback, I'll make sure to take notes and take it back to PIC. I just, it's nothing too scary, it's just lots of reading about buses, and everyone loves that. Next thing about RTC, they are back at full capacity. They made it back a little, a couple weeks sooner than they thought they would, so they're at full capacity. They're still talking about routes to redo, and that will be something, and that's something in the Metro Policy Updates. I will look for my packet from, from RTC, and get that sent off to Krista to pass out to everyone, so you can get some more information. Then, last Friday, I was in the Skip meeting. Skip has formed the South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership Partners Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), we are using that to help find, to fund grants, to help get, find projects and work that way. We needed two directors, and we chose from a large city and a small city, and choosing a director was much like, if anyone ever saw Mash and Hawkeye, always got the short straw. It was the two people who drew the short straw. I was one of the short straws, so I am a director for the, for the Skip Foundation. Once I understand fully what that means, I'll let everyone know, but I believe it means I'm gonna start writing grants, so, or writing grant applications, so might be a good useful skill to have. But the biggest issue we had was our budget for next year. There are talks that there will have to be increases, and we all knew that eventually there would be increases, but gotta scroll down to it, so looking at, they were talking about a 15% increase in dues over the next few years, that's 15% every year. And they said they only plotted out 15% for budgetary, to, to look at budgetary reasons, but they were only looking at the 2022 budget, and not anything else estimated for our costs this year, this year, it's, we pay 7,500 in dues, next year, it would be 8625. The, another thing in the budget was that we are setting up a Skip Advisory Board, which would be filled with people from the community who either have lived experience, or know something about being home, or be, about the homelessness process, and getting people into housing. There was talks that we would pay these volunteers for their time. I'm not sure if I mentioned that before, but it was one of those, oh, we think we'll get better people if we pay them, it's like, well, of course, you'll get better people if you pay them, you get better people if you pay everyone, but we're asking for volunteers. I, we had to vote on the budget that day, and I voted no, because I believe that if we're asking people to volunteer their time, and we start paying volunteers, we have no, you're no longer volunteering, you're taking a job, so if anyone has questions about that, I did have Krista also send off the budget for Skip, so if you have any questions, please refer to that, or Mark, make sure I don't violate anything here, if you have any other questions about it, go ahead and ask me now, or at our next meeting, so we don't violate OPMAs.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe about the Skip budget? Beth?
Yeah, just a quick question about the, the dues, 15% year-over-year increase, is that something, like, we've committed dollars from several house bills? Or sales tax increase and such? Is that are they taking that money into account when they're talking about a budget shortfall?
So they're not really talking about a budget shortfall, it's they are, we are hiring, they are hiring staff for Skip, so you have, you have two full-time members of that staff, and they will be looking at possibly adding a third person, that was an original conversation about six months ago. So, but the dues, raising them is, is just part of their, the process of, you know, it's, it's not because of the house bills that we've allocated the funding from, it's just that, you know, with inflation going up and costs going up, we, they may have to increase it. Now, the 15% year-over-year is not because, is, is not based solely on fact, it might not be 15% in 2023, it says 15% in 2022 at this moment.
And wouldn't that come back to council during our budget process about agreeing to the increase in the dues? Am I correct, Reagan?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Joe? All right, anything else, Joe? Thank you, Joe, I just have a few updates. Again, about the National Night Out, Krista did send out an updated email at 3:09 today, so look there for the link to your National Night Out site, so that you can sign up for next week. Several council members have already signed up, there are still several areas that, or several neighborhoods that are still have availability open to them. Monday, SCA had a meeting with the King County Redistricting Group, and there's no, basically, there's no representation on this committee from South King County, but they're working where District 4, which is North Seattle and Central Seattle, needs to be cut down by almost 30,000 people, because that district is too large, so that there's going to be 251,000 people per district, so they will be cut down, and then five, six, or five, seven, and nine have to be increased, and a couple other ones will need to be increased as well, but basically, all the Seattle districts will need to be cut. So we will see that as it goes, and they'll be given another presentation to the city managers sometime in September about the next update, and they will come up with several maps, they have to make a decision before the end of the year, so that it takes effect for next year after the election. And I have a SCA executive meeting tomorrow, and thank you for bringing up about the Mayor's Day of Concern, and I'll, I'll reach out to Lisa also, or Krista, are you gonna reach out to the Storehouse about the 25th?
I have provided an email to Julie, who apparently would be the one to do that.
Perfect, and I'll let Julie do that. With that, I don't have anything else, except Andy, you can be reassured that since I'm in Sumner several days a week, I will not be speeding through there, because that's not the way I want to get together with you, so with that, I will open it up to the second public comment period.
Mayor, can I interrupt for a moment? I was skipped for my comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Beth.
That's totally fine, no, I know, I raised my hand.
I'm sitting here thinking, do not skip Beth, do not skip Beth, and then I skipped you anyway, I'm sorry, Beth.
I'll keep it super brief. Where's, oh, is Chief?
Yep.
Oh, he's still there, okay, hey, I, I just wanted to say, you know, again, what everybody else has said in the last six years, I, I really appreciate the, the kindness, the humanity, the, the professionalism, the culture that, that you created with our, with our, our law enforcement department, and I know that you know, we're all gonna miss you just tremendously, and, and, but I appreciate the, the groundwork that you've laid for, for the future, and hopefully, I'll see you in Sumner, not with speeding. But anyway, thank you very much for your service.
Sorry, Beth. All right, did I miss anybody else? All right, with that, we'll move into the sub, second public comment period, speakers will state their name, address, and organization, comments are directed to the City Council, not the audience or staff, and comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to address council at this time? Jonathan.
I also would like to say thank you to Chief McCurdy for excellent service, and he's been a, one of the people who's taught me many, many things over the years, and I'm going to miss him.
Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anybody else in the audience wish to address council at this time? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I will allow the chief one last time, if he'd like to address anybody tonight.
I'll just thank you all, it was, over the last six years, I think one of the biggest things I learned in Covington is the value of a small city government, although I guess technically Covington's a larger city now. But it's been amazing, you know, getting that opportunity to police the community where I live, and my entire family, my mom, my brother, my daughter, and, and my immediate family will all live here in the area, and it's, it's just a unique opportunity I couldn't pass up, so I thank you all for the support, you guys do a great job of supporting the police department and holding us accountable at the same time, and that is appreciated by all of us, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Andy. With that, we do not have an executive session, and our council meeting is adjourned at 8:25, thank you all very much, and you all have a great evening, good night.